Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation this morning, be given by Chaplain Philip Snodgrass from the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, on many occasions, you have shown us that your word holds true, and we can trust everything you do. You love that which is just and good, and your unfailing love fills the earth. Lord, you merely spoke and the heavens were created. You breathed the word and all the stars were born. You assign the sea its boundaries and lock the oceans in vast reservoirs. Lord, we stand in awe of you because you spoke and everything began. Lord, your plans for us are perfect and stand firm forever. Your intentions can never be shaken. So this morning, Lord, we choose to trust and follow you. Bless all who enter here today, for it is for your glory and honor that we serve. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to our beloved, who we sustain, our nation under God, indivisible, with the living justice for all.
Next up, we're going to try to do some catch-up this morning on some recognition of some retirees we've gotten a couple of months behind on, but we're going to catch those up, and hopefully by April, we'll be caught up. So I'm going to ask our retirees on the list here to join us up front, to receive your certificates. And we have this morning with us Levada Pearson, Terry Jocelyn, Michael Clark, George Edward Tucker Jr., Kevin Kaloff, and Marion Louis Nettles, and Cynthia Givens. If you guys are with us, please join us up front. and then they all pretty much say the same, except for the years of service to the county and their names. So it says, "The Mobile County Commission presenting this certificate and wishing to express its sincere thanks and gratitude, dedication to service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued service and success in your retirement." And this is Ms. Pearson. And that's twenty-seven years and one month. Terry Jocelyn. Whoa, thirty-eight years and ten months. Cynthia Givens, twenty-five years and two months. Michael Clark, ten years and two months. George Tucker Jr., that's twenty-three years and five months. We getting, we getting close to two hundred years up here on the stage. Kevin Kaloff. Did I say your name last time? Kaloff. I thought it was Kaloff. Twenty-five years and one month. Thank you. And Marion Nettles, twenty-eight years and four months. And I also want to make a special announcement about Ms. Nettles. I believe you're going to serve on the Board of Registitors, is that correct? So although she's retiring after almost thirty years at the county, she's still going to be serving the Mobile County community. So thank you for that. Anybody want to say anything about their many, many years of service at the county? Now we'll move on, take a photo. Cherie, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. We have two people signed up to speak this morning. The first is Cindy Knowlton with Alabama Extension Service, and she would like to give the commission a brief update.
Just remind speakers to state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Yes, Cindy Knowlton, ten seventy Schillinger Road North, John Archer Building. Thank you for your continual support, and I just wanted to come up and give a couple of updates. Guess it was last fall. Well, let me back up a little bit. So I've been here almost three years now, and I noticed when I got here, we had some very old folding chairs. I don't know how long. It was just hundreds of them. So last fall, I went ahead and made the purchase of some padded folding chairs, and it's been a game-changer with all the people. I just don't know if y'all are aware of how many meetings we have at the John Archer Building in the large and small auditoriums. We actually have like a three-inch binder with every single day of the year, and I mean, every day folks are calling to, to reserve those auditoriums. So that was a very good purchase, as well as maybe a couple of months ago, I purchased through Auburn in Alabama A&amp;M Extension, I purchased an AED to, and had it mounted in the front foyer of the building. Just, I feel better having that there. So those are just a couple of updates on the building. And I also gave you each a small little packet of some exciting programs we've got coming up. I feel all of our programs are exciting, but we have our Second Annual Spring Festival coming up, March twenty-third, and we literally have thousands of container vegetables, plants for sale. And it'll be a full day with demonstrations, tours of our dream garden, as well as vendors, and, and demonstrations and speakers. I'm not, I just want to give a quick account of how important our master gardeners in Mobile County are. Last year, they volunteered eleven thousand, five hundred and forty hours for a total worth of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And so they are very special to us, and I know they are doing so many good projects here in the county. It's such a long list. Also, in the packet, I'm excited about this one. I'm working with Dina Pollard in our Discover Alabama Extension here at the Plaza atrium on April eighth and ninth. And so I've got about twelve of our agents who are going to come down and set up in the atrium and just share with all of you what we do. And so we'll have our home grounds agent, our food preservation, health and wellness agents, our four-H youth development agents, forestry and agriculture, wildlife, and we'll also do a couple of lunch, lunch and learn talks that day as well. So we're looking forward to that. And then I think the last one is on a program on monarch butterflies. And so that's the end of May, but it was a colorful flyer, so I wanted to bring that to you with our, we have an agent who just has worked really close and has gone actually to Mexico and done research with the monarch butterflies, and so she'll be giving, giving our program that day. So we're looking forward to that. So thank you again for your continual support. Are there any questions on anything?
Can you send, can you email these flyers to us, please? We have newsletters that we can use those to help push them out. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. These all are very exciting events coming up, particularly the one here at Government Plaza.
Yes.
And the one about the monarch butterflies. I love those. So thank you so much.
Absolutely.
So the first one was on March the twenty-third.
Yes.
And that one is vegetable plant sale, free admission. And there's all kinds of vegetables, tomato squash, cucumbers, eggplants, and peppers.
Yes, yes. So we work with our Auburn Ornamental Research Station here in Mobile. Master gardeners go out and they're, they planted from seed, and they've grown literally thousands. Like last year, I think we had four thousand plants out there. And so, and they're very nominal. I mean, it's maybe two dollars, two dollars, two, three dollars. Plant your containers.
Very good. That's the way to get your spring garden started.
That's right.
I was going to ask you, does the master gardener program, is it, are the classes at the extension office?
Yes, at John Archer. And so we have our fall, we have the interim class in the fall. So that's August to November, fourteen weeks.
Okay. So it's just, you, you would just call the Extension Service to set it up?
Yes, call our office and sign up to get on the list. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing this information with us.
Absolutely. Thank you.
We have another speaker this morning, Mr. Alvin Bell, would like to address Stokes Subdivision.
What agenda, not item number, that is. Good morning, Alvin. How you doing?
Good morning. Thank you.
So you got, you brought some backup with you up there. Good morning, Mike. What agenda number is this? Cherie, do you know, Alvin? I know it's a subdivision in Grand Bay, right? Out off of Grand Bay Wilmer Road.
Stokes subdivision. So do you need my address and everything, or?
If you don't mind, just your work address.
Eighty-eighty-one Cottage Hill Road. And I'm here only to say that we have, being O'More Incorporated, joining property owners, no opposition to that subdivision. That's it.
That's pretty simple. Thank you for coming down.
Do we, you were, you were saying, hey, I don't know that we got his name and, and that information for the record.
Alvin Bell and, what's the address? Eighty, eighty-eighty-one Cottage Hill Road. Yeah, sorry.
No more speakers.
That's for Dirt Incorporated. That's the business.
No more speakers.
Right, thank you. I want to say one thing, too, before we get started on the agenda. Brian Kegley, next week, your la, the next meeting will be your last meeting. And if anybody here has any pictures, old, old pictures of Brian, or any funny stories they'd like to tell, y'all bring them with you next, the next commission meeting, and we'll all have a good laugh, particularly if y'all bring the pictures with you.
Remember what goes around comes around here.
Item one. Approved minutes of the regular meeting, meetings of February fifteenth and February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved. Second.
Two, approved list of claims.
So moved. Second.
Three was held at the conference. Four, approved grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the two thousand and twenty-four local government pistol permit revenue loss fund for a to-be-determined amount with no local match, and authorize the president of the commission to execute all documents.
So moved. Second.
Five, approved grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act prosecution program in the amount of forty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy cents, with fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety cents in local match, to be paid by the Office of the Mobile County District Attorney, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved. Second.
Six, approved grant agreement from the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Stop Violence Against Women Act Sexual Assault Prosecution Program in the amount of thirty-five thousand, with eleven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents in local match, to be paid by the Office of the Mobile County District Attorney, and authorize execution of all associated documents.
So moved. Second.
Seven, authorized contract with the City of Mobile for payment of up to nine hundred thousand. In the event the construction bid for the Africa Town Welcome Center exceeds six million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, seventy-three dollars, will be paid from District One carryover funds for the Africa Town Welcome Center.
So moved. Second.
Eight, approved assignment to Tag Architects for new security gates at camps two, three, and four. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with the development of new security gates. The proposed fee is thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
So moved. Second.
Nine, approved assignment to DePlantis Design Group for Sims Senior Center Walking Trail Phase Two. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associate, associated with the development of a walking trail and pickleball court. The proposed fee is ninety-nine thousand, sixty dollars.
So moved. Second.
Ten, authorized advertising for bids, Camp One Two-story Building renovation.
So moved. Second.
Eleven, approved assignment to PH and J Architects for roof replacements for John Archer Center and Eight Mile Shopping Center. The work will consist of design bidding and project administration associated with the re-roofing at John Archer Center and Eight Mile Shopping Center. The proposed fee is one hundred and five thousand.
So moved. Second.
Twelve, approved conveyance of the Mobile County Commission's undivided five percent interest in the real property located at one twenty-six Mobile Street to the Dumas Wesley Community Center, pending legal review.
So moved. Jay, could we get some information on that?
You remember Jay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
You can.
No, go ahead.
Well, many years ago, we made some contributions to Wesley Dumas Center for some repair, upgrades. The source of the funds required county have an ownership interest in the property.
Yeah.
And so we agreed on five percent. That has now come and gone. They have some insurance issues, and staff decided we didn't need our five percent.
Okay. That's, that's kind of what I thought.
There's a few more of those lingering out there, too.
I remembered that we did one with the, the senior center on Hillcrest as well. Yeah.
At some point, we probably should convey that back.
Okay. Second.
Thirteen, authorized county commission president to sign and send a letter to congressional representatives in opposition to the legislating, legislation allowing for the increase of truck load weight limits on local streets and roads.
So moved. Second.
Fourteen, approved application of RFP properties to transfer retail beer and table wine license to Sae Pranam for Country Corner, six thousand, Grand Bay Wilmer Road South.
So moved. Second.
Fifteen, adopt resolution authorizing request to the Revenue Commissioner's Office at Michael Square Shopping Center to dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list declared as surplus, and authorize items to be disposed of by lawful means.
So moved. Second.
Sixteen, approved contract amendment number one with Arduer Group for Project City of Chickasaw Sewer Rehabilitation Project to add additional engineering and design services. The costs associated with the contract will be reimbursed by the restore grant.
So moved. Second.
Seventeen, approve appropriation contract with TAPS Drill in the amount of seventeen thousand to purchase equipment to support its Honor Guard one oh one initiative.
So moved. Second.
Eighteen, approve amendment to the Mobile County Commission American Rescue Plan Act Strategic Spending Plan approved August first, first, two thousand and twenty-two to amend awarded funding as follows.
So moved. Second.
Number nineteen, we will have a slight change to the fifth project funding amount. Instead of ARP oh three, that will read ARP oh six, three oh two dash twenty-two. Everything else remains the same.
Which one is, which one was that? The?
The fifth project number. The third one on the second page.
Okay. And when, before we, before it's voted on, Jason Lewis is here this morning from Mid-America Golf. I'd ask him to be here. Jason, if you want to come down, after Eddie reads the agenda, and if anybody has any questions about the contract or the timeline, I thought it'd be good to have Jason here. Go ahead, Eddie. Sorry.
I'm Jason Lewis, Mid-America Golf and Landscape. I'm the CEO for the company. While we have a schedule for the golf course, as far as the schedule wise, the intent is to start around mid-April, and start with most of the infrastructure, the civil part, everything underground, get all the earth moving, the clearing, and then the silk protection for the environmental surroundings of that area. That's all going to take place in the year of two thousand and twenty-four, and then we'll go into the spring of two thousand and twenty-five, doing all the grass and all the detail work. You'll see it come into, in the end, early fall, two thousand and twenty-five.
Go ahead, Eddie.
So moved.
Eddie hadn't read.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just had a question. The, the, some of the funds that are being moved are ARPA projects?
Yes.
What, which, which projects are those?
The major one is the Splash Pad and Playground Project out at West Mobile County Park. And those funds are going to be reimbursed by the City of Mobile with an agreement I have with them that'll be on a upcoming agenda. So it's, I'm taking the money out of the West Mobile County Park Project, moving it to this project, and with the annexation of the City of Mobile, I had worked out an agreement with the mayor on some things at that park, because it's now in the City of Mobile, although the county still owns the park. And also, there's going to be an additional amount that will be coming from the Mobile County Public School System to also reimburse that project.
These ARP oh six projects, what?
Eddie, can you help me with what those other projects are?
Sure. So, so the first one listed is the ARP oh six, zero, zero, three, dash, twenty-two. That's the second project number on the second page.
Oh.
And that, but, and that is the transfer of money from the West Mobile County Park Project. That was a revenue loss project within the ARPA plan. The next one that we changed to ARP zero six, three, zero, two, dash, twenty-two, of a little over one point two million dollars, is what's remaining from his two point five million that each commissioner got as part of the revenue loss in the ARPA plan. That's, that's the amount that's remaining of that two point five million.
Okay. Just trying to understand the pieces of your puzzle here.
It's a big puzzle. It was just moving some money around that I had saved up for the last three years. The two, two million, I don't remember what I spent the other eight hundred thousand, but it was an ARP project, and that was what was remaining. And then these other amounts are just coming from obvious locations. But the big one, I think, is the two and a half million that's coming from the Splash Pad and Playground Project. Then, like I said, will be reimbursed through contracts with the City of Mobile and the Mobile County Public School System.
Okay.
We got the mon, we got it all together, I think. I hope we do. I'm sure Jason hopes we got all the money together also.
Also here in appreciation, knowing how long it takes to put something like this together, and all the funds to get together. It takes a team, and I have to be part of that team now.
Thank you for being here.
Nineteen.
Is there a motion? You made the motion. I'll second.
Thank you. Did you read the agenda item already? I don't even, I don't.
It was not read.
Okay. Do you need, does he need to read?
Why don't you want to backtrack?
No, I said, so moved. I'm sorry.
I don't think you ever read the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's try that again.
Okay. Nineteen, award bid to Mid-America Golf and Landscape for Project Mobile County Golf Course Project Golf Course Phase for their total low bid in the amount of thirteen million, nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand, fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. And authorize execution of contract documents will be paid from the funding sources as follows.
Now, so moved. Second.
Thank you.
Twenty, approved professional services contract with Jubilee HR Consultants in the amount of up to twenty-one thousand, six hundred, for a term of three months to provide human resources consulting services, in accordance with statement of work number one, pending final legal review.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-one, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-two, approve renewal of software agreement with TSA in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty cents for VMware vSphere standard for the Revenue Commissioner's Office.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-three, approve renewal of software agreement with EJ Ward in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-one cents for annual SaaS billing and annual HW tank maintenance for the county commission.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-four, approve renewal of subscription agreement with GoDaddy Inc. in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for Standard Wildcard SLSL, mobilecountyal.gov, a two-year renewal for the county commission.
So moved. Second.
Twenty-five, approve service order with Unity Fiber in the amount of six hundred and ten dollars per month for thirty-six months to build fiber from fifteen fifty South Broad Street and create a one hundred megabyte per second ethernet connection back to Mobile Government Plaza.
What's that, fifteen fifty South Broad Street?
Good morning, Commissioner. It's the sheriff's office. They have some locations there. They have some locations there and we're trying to run some internet.
I think that's the new K nine.
So moved, second.
Twenty-six, approve appropriation contract with the mothers involved against gun violence in the amount of two thousand five hundred from District One Commission Funds for its gun violence initiative.
So moved, second.
Twenty-seven, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of nineteen thousand from District Two Education Funds for picnic tables and material for outdoor dining area at Taylor White Elementary School.
So moved, second.
Twenty-eight, approve appropriation contract with Africa Town Community Development Corporation in the, in the amount of thirty-one thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents from District One Commission Funds to pay off their community's tractor.
So moved, second.
Twenty-nine, approve appropriation contract with Mobile Azelia Trail in the total amount of five thousand for its golf tournament event. Funds will be divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Thirty, approve appropriation contract with the Mobile Azelia Trail in the total amount of fifteen thousand for travel to Washington DC for the Cherry Blossom Parade. Funds will be divided as follows.
So moved, second.
Thirty-one, approve request to the Mobile Alumni Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Theta Sorority to rent two voting machines in the total amount of three hundred dollars to conduct elections for voting on policies and procedures.
So moved, second.
Thirty-two, approve lease agreement with Latty Latte for a twelve-month term, subject to two twelve-month renewals at the same rates and terms as set forth in the original lease agreement.
So moved, second.
Thirty-three, approve contract amendment with the Water Works and Sewer Board of the City of Pritchard. Agenda item number forty-two, approved February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three to eliminate the reimbursement provision and provide the Water Works and Sewer Board of the City of Pritchard with payment of the remaining amount of the original one point five million appropriated, subject to legal review.
So moved, second.
Thirty-four, award bid to HCL Contracting for Project Mount Vernon Streets Resurfacing for their low bid in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
So moved, second.
Thirty-five, adopt resolution to accept proposal from Regions Bank for purchase of the county's twenty-nine million pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facilities bonds, series twenty twenty B.
So moved, second.
Thirty-six, adopt resolution and order authorizing the issuance of twenty-nine million principal amount of pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facility bonds, series twenty twenty B.
So moved, second.
Thirty-seven, adopt resolution and order calling for redemption on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, all of county's twenty-nine million pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facilities bonds, series twenty twenty B.
So moved, second.
Thirty-eight, adopt resolution to accept proposal from Regions Bank for the purchase of the county's twenty million pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facilities bonds, series twenty twenty-two B.
So moved, second.
Thirty-nine, adopt resolution and order authorizing the issuance of twenty million dollars principal amount of pay-as-you-go road, bridge, drainage, and facilities bonds, series twenty twenty-two B.
So moved, second.
Forty, adopt resolution and order calling for redemption on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, all of the county's twenty million pay-as-you-go road, bridge, and drainage facilities bonds, series twenty twenty-two B.
So moved, second.
Forty-one, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Project Howells Ferry Road at Our Tower Road Intersection Improvements.
So moved, second.
Forty-two, approve preliminary plat only of the Pines of Dawes. This is a private road subdivision and the roads within the subdivision will not be accepted by Mobile County for maintenance.
So moved, second.
Forty-three, approve preliminary and final plat of Stokes addition to Grand Bay.
So moved, second.
Forty-four, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track One in the amount of four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, Track Two in the amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars on County Farm Road in the total rounded amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars for Project Murray Road and others grade, grade, base, and pave.
So moved, second.
Forty-five, approve non-reimbursable agreement for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way on Carroll Plantation Road with Alabama Power for Project Bush Lane and Carroll Plantation Road, grade, drain, base, and pave.
So moved, second.
Forty-six, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Mobile County Aquatics Center Phase One.
So moved, second.
Forty-seven, approve setting speed amendments as listed below for roads, segments of roads, and subdivisions as follows.
So moved, second.
Commissioners, we have two add-ons this morning. Add-on number one, approve appointment of Darrell Gomian to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Mobile Sports Authority for a three-year term expiring March tenth, two thousand twenty-seven.
So moved, second.
I want to abstain, please.
Add-on number two, adopt resolution determining the number of electronic voting machines at established polling places in each precinct and authorize the judge of probate to separate the list of qualified registered voters in each precinct so that electronic voting machines will not record more than two thousand four hundred votes.
So moved, second.
And Commissioners, if we want to hear from Cynthia, their documents or tests that reflect it, I will say this was a late add-on, but in talking with Judge Davis and Mark Irwin, both thought this should be approved. And I appreciate y'all doing that.
If you could just offer a bit of an explanation for those people who are wondering what's happening here.
Cynthia, want to come down, wherever she is? But while she comes down to give a little more detail, there's a code section seventeen six dash one of the Code of Alabama that requires in March, the first meeting, in every even numbered year, the counties examine the state voter registration list such that there are sufficient electronic voting machines and no more than twenty-four hundred qualified voters will cast by electronic voting. That was an act that was passed in two thousand three. It was amended in two thousand six. We have passed this in even numbered years. I think we just missed it on Thursday. Cynthia brought to our attention after the meeting on Thursday, and our research reveals that we should do it, even though the March primary was last week. I will say that the probate court is aware of this requirement and they are adhering to that. What statute requires we do it. Maybe the statute needs to be changed. Our election cycle statewide is March as opposed to perhaps in June, which was at the time of this act, and as it was amended this past. Cynthia, did I cover that okay for you? Okay. So Cynthia put together the attachment, which is the voting precinct manifest, and maybe just in about two minutes explaining that, please.
So the voting manifest that you got is the same one used in March, the March elections. It has all of the precinct locations, the number of machines, and that was adopted before the March election. However, you did not get the number of active voters, inactive voters, and total registered voters. This is just an add-on that tells you that we are in compliance with the law.
So it just reiterates our compliance then, basically?
Yeah, and follows the state statute.
Right.
Mark, on the first meeting of March for all county commissions every even numbered years. So thank y'all for considering doing that.
Item forty-eight, commission announcements and/or comments. Commissioner, what's that?
Well, I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Hudson on her successful election.
Thank you, thank you.
I know it's last Tuesday, yeah. And we're just happy that you have that behind you and you can get back to the hard work that you've been doing all these years that you've been here.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you both over the next term.
Yeah, congratulations. And I know you had a worry-free weekend this past weekend, I'm sure, compared to the last year. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Anything else? Did you have anything? I just have one quick announcement to make. I want to remind, and also Cherie, I'm going to ask you to put this on our social media out, forums, remind all political candidates who ran for office in this last political races to remember to please go remove your signs from the side of the roads and county right-of-ways, the ones that are there. That's pretty much it. If you'll put that on our social media and if you know anyone or friends with anyone who ran for office who may still have signs out, please ask them to try to get those up. We're a week out from the election. And on the way here this morning, there were still a lot of political signs on the side of the road.
Forty-nine, approve request for motion to adjourn until March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved, second.
We stand adjourned, thank you.